Yeah.
All right. Got quite a great success.
Okay, go.
It is now six o'clock and we will begin our Adrian City Commission work study session for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Commissioner Health.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
All commission members present.
And at this time, I will now turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. My first item is, is there a recent custom and update on the River View Terrace situation? Um, and I'll do pretty much like I did last time, and this could be a brief, uh, overview, most of you have already heard everything that I have to say in my weekly reports, so. Uh, just keep it brief on that. I'll take your questions. So if you might have, I want to leave, make sure we leave enough time for the street closure policy discussion, which is a second item, uh, uh, that will take a half hour or so. So, uh, as you probably know, the fifteenth of September is now past, and that was the date when uh, the majority of the hotel vouchers that Mr. and so that provided, uh, money from the and salvation uh, ran out. So, uh, a lot of moving around happened, they get out, and, uh, most of those folks moved over to the Adrian Inn. As of last week, we were full, and the Adrian Inn, with respect to all the functional rooms, we may today gotten the use of three or four more, a change in locks. There were rooms that had key card readers didn't work anymore, and so we're putting additional locks on those. Uh, those are all second floor rooms, so the first floor rooms pretty much all are spoken for. Look her up for Eric in case he sees this. Are you online, Eric? Yeah. So Eric, please feel free to interrupt me and correct anything I say that's wrong. Eric and Matt, who I think is also online, are far more familiar with this than I am. They've been spending a great deal of their time over, uh, at the motel since we acquired it. Uh, that's pretty much working from there these days. We had, uh, a very few people. I, I think, uh, about four or five residents take medallion management up on their offer of, uh, similar facilities elsewhere on the state. And so the emergency operations center team, particularly, uh, Craig Tannis and Eric facilitated the move for those folks by running, uh, U-Haul, two U-Haul trucks, and, uh, then Craig was able to secure volunteers from the Sierra Heights, uh, wrestling and the cross, not wrestling, the crossmen's help with the move, and so they unloaded everything from their River View rooms, packed them up, and moved them over to their destination on the west side of the state. But it was, uh, like I say, uh, quite a number of additional residents came and were moved into the Adrian Inn. You had their, they extended, so Mr. agreed to extend hotel stays where, uh, there was, uh, permanent residence reserved for the person, uh, and they were just waiting on a move-in date, so where they had evidence of that, but they showed that through housing help, they were able to extend their stays. They line up with when, um, that availability for permanent housing was, but that was a condition of them doing that, but they in fact, arranged from outside. Uh, that's kinda where we're at right now. We continue to try to make things more livable over there by doing repairs if we can. You'll see that on your, kind of, tonight is the roof repair that we talked about last time, with only going ahead with a repair, not with a replacement. Probably only lasting a year or so, but it'll get us through this winter and allow that space we hope to use as a community room. EPW's already been in there and taken out all the old, um, ceiling tiles that have been moisture damaged, um, frame and everything. Also, we'll probably either have to pull up the carpet or do a carpet cleaning still before we do a useful space. Uh, Brown and Sons, who that quote is from, that they could mobilize within three weeks after that was, I guess, was our goal. So, that I'm happy to answer any questions again.
Wonderful. Greg, um, Andrew, you had let me know that Housing Health was taking care of all the intakes, and then later I found out that they no longer were doing that. Somebody else was doing it.
Yeah, and so as those news to me on Friday also, uh, they kinda just checked out of that, uh, on Thursday with everything that was going on. Um, they will be maintaining a, a waiting list for us, but once we're full, like we are about to be, they will be maintaining a waiting list of folks, uh, from River View who are still interested in getting in the Adrian Inn, but, uh, we've been checking people in directly. They have a list of the names of the review, their residents, and so one of them presents themselves, uh, out at the office. But that's, I can say, that's just for second floor rooms at this point. We got, we already have waiting.
So ultimately, will they be partnering with us on the road?
Well, that's a discussion that I think wants to be had going forward here. Uh, I kinda approached that subject with Claudia and Shannon from Housing Health on their, my office on Thursday in terms of operating the facilities. You know, they, they're very interested in having a transitional housing facility uh, in the county. This could provide that, uh, for them. I think that's one expensive option for that. This is, we decide what we've already paid for it. There stand for repairs in the longer term that will need to be made, but, uh, I kinda I put out there to them the idea that, well, maybe we can kinda punt on the ultimate disposition and ownership of the facility that get them involved in the operations. We would, we would really love it good. Not our city engineer's job nor our party chief's job.
Right, right.
Doesn't operate, it's pretty shortly here, won't operate like a motel anymore, knowing it will stabilize, I think, and not be so much work. I don't know, at this point, once things are fully operational and that's it.
Hey, did we get all of the mini fridges and microwaves in?
Eric, did you hear that question?
I did. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, so as far as we know, everybody has a fridge and microwave. Um, I ordered, we are out of refrigerators as of today. We put the last ones in, so I did order a couple more to have spares. Um, you know, some of them are antiquated, and we've had to replace a couple as they're being used. Uh, but as far as we know as of today, uh, and, and even before today, everybody had one, but some of the older ones are, are, uh, going out. Um, I think, uh, there was four or five within the last week that just using them. Um, they had to be replaced. So, everybody, as far as we know, um, everybody has a refrigerator and a microwave.
Thank you. Your questions?
I have lots. Where to begin, honestly? Um, if Housing Health doesn't help operate the facility or, uh, or another instance, what, where are we at? Are we really, are, are we going to have someone there from the city? Are we hiring someone? Um, I know we, we have every, uh, tenant to go there and, and do this. Is that, is that going to be a workable solution? Who? Are we, is that person a city employee now?
So we do have, we have two contractors that we've hired, hired, whether not employees, like contractors. Uh, one of the person who lives there, we've got part of her, considerate, gave her a room there. An hourly rate. The, those, some of the housekeeping and sort of the front desk, definitely. I don't know where we're at on her apartment yet. Eric, can you tell us where we're at on Lisa's apartment at this point, Eric or Matt, either one?
Yeah, her apartment, um, she's basically ready to move in, but we really have to wait for the ceiling to be, or the, I'm sorry, the roof to be repaired. Um, over the last week, we found some leaks above her apartment that, uh, definitely need to be repaired before she can move in. So, and also the HVAC, um, the belt actually wore out on the HVAC unit for that, um, and they were there this morning. They got that repaired and, and back up and running. Um, it was just a belt and some filters. So hopefully, as soon as they get the, uh, the roof repaired, then she should be able to move in.
Sure. So that, that is right behind the front desk, um, when she was in there. This is, by the way, where Andy Pelle was living when we bought it, so, uh, worked for him, but, uh, uh, and then we have another contract person who does, also does housekeeping. Our system is to try to clean every room once a week, do, uh, laundry service for the bed linens and the towels once a week. Other than that, I think this is supposed to be an intent within the facility, and so we expect people to keep their own room up, but, but just, uh, self protection. Two people, so, you know, I, I think that would be enough. Once, like I say, once we're stabilized operationally, it's not gonna provide maintenance. You know, it's like, we have to have a solution for that. We're going, we end up doing that decision.
I have a lot of concerns. I just really do. I, um, I don't know, I don't have a lot of answers, but I'm very concerned at the amount of staff time that is happening over there. That means that other things are not getting. I understand it was a crisis. We, as a city, have gone above and beyond to, way above and beyond than what I would agree any other city in our area would have done. Uh, we need to be looking at and, and.
I just think from the management side of it, it, it's all about the partners. If we can see who's gonna partner and help us, you know, run the day-to-day stuff, like, like Greg said, it's like, it's not, we're not gonna have, we shouldn't have a full-time, it's not a full-time. It's, it's basically seventy-five apartments or whatever, whatever number is, so, um, I, I do like the idea of having a clean once a week, because we do own the property, but uh, from a management standpoint, it, it becomes a point where we all know who's gonna come to the table and help assist around day-to-day, and we have to hire a manager company to run it. Simple as that. And then if the rent's gonna be adjusted a little bit to make up for it, so we can have a four-two, then we need to adjust the rent accordingly. From say, three to three fifty, or, or it's still substantially less than what those residents were paying at the other place. So we gotta be able to be cash flow positive, be able to pay for the housekeeper and, you know, any one of the things of that nature, so, um, when it comes to exit strategy, I, I don't know. I don't know what that would be, or what our options are, but, you know, and then now, I think we have to understand that it's our, it's our building regardless. I mean, you know, we need to figure out who's gonna manage, because you're right about city staff time, you're pulling, you're pulling Matt. Matt's now a hotel manager, and Eric's, you know, over there also doing things, but, um, I mean, it comes from, uh, getting the people to the table and see what the plan is. You know, from other entities, if they, if they don't wanna come to the table, because remember, they were not happy to be, they're a public nuisance, so, and, uh, and now it's time to act. So, put up for you know what.
Well, and this is supposed to be, I mean, even what they wanted was it to be transitional housing. And I'm sure that there's some technical for that, but the people that are housed at the Adrian Inn need to know, this is not a long-term solution. We need to, you know, you give, start giving them, maybe we have, and I just don't know, but deadlines, like, we're looking at this for six months' term, and you need to be working with Housing Health or whoever can help you find real housing, because in six months, in a year, you're gonna have, whatever, whatever statement is, you will not be living here. This is transitional housing.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we did have our resident meeting two weeks ago now, almost. Passed out of, uh, house rules, if you will, and one of the requirements for occupancy is that you be actively looking for permanent housing. That's an expectation, um, you know, and your health point earlier, I, I mean, an unusual aspect of this is, unlike the average um, apartment community or hotel, we want to be empty, right? And so uh, that is gonna happen. People are going to find permanent housing and population. Um, staying there of River View Terrace tenants is going to decline over time, but we're probably the max or just about at the max right now, just above the, the mass population level that we have. We, and that's a good thing from the mission standpoint, but from the cash flow standpoint, that would be bad. You know, won't be sustainable. You know, my kind of back-of-the-umbrella budget that I did for it, um, based on the expenses, it does not have, we stood at a new just operational expenses. You have to have about fifty rooms fall for it at the rate we're charging for it. Once we start on all that. Yeah, if, if, you know, if, if it's going to become a transitional housing facility, that's time for other people in transition to be moved in, but that's way out of our speed stuff, common call. You know, and that's kind of the point where that's, that's kind of the drop dead point where that needs to happen, because we, we've set it aside for River View Terrace. As they find other places to live, then our, uh, revenues are gonna decline. It'll decline to the point where, like, the bank works.
Yeah, I, well, I had the same concerns as Commissioner Roberts. Um, I, I've driven by there every morning, and, you know, it's seven-thirty in the morning, and there's, there's, I know Matt's there. I see a lot of DPW. I, I, I see a lot of our presence there every day, and it's just very concerning, because I'm like, what are they not doing? Because they are having to be there all the time, and I, and I see quite a few people there working, and I know right now, you know, there's a lot going on with, you know, trying to figure out, you know, uh, all the maintenance and the roofing concerns, like, you know, all of that. Um, and I, but I feel like we really need they get this figured out, if it is what we bring in a management group for, you know, for all of these day-to-day, we need to make sure city employees are being able to be city employees for what they were determined to be doing, instead of, you know, being at, even in all the time, full-time, because that, that is concerning, because it, it makes me wonder where the lag is on the opposite edge, since they've been there so much, and I do see them there every single day. So, um, I, I, I have that same concern, that we need to get that figured out. Um, and I'm glad to hear that, you know, there is, there is, you know, going to be somebody living there, you know, that, that there is some, there's some movement in that direction, but I really wanna, you know, yeah, we need to get thinking about, you know, when it comes to maintenance and things like that, so that we're not, especially because we're getting close to winter months, and DPW is gonna be out with snow plowing and everything else. We know that's coming, and um, there's gonna be a lot of extra things like that going on as well, where they're not gonna be able to be over there.
I do wanna say that I don't want us to assume that they aren't doing their job, because I know, for example, those guys that, that they're doing on their own time, helping out and doing some great things, so I, I wanna make sure that they know that we appreciate how much work they've put in, and how much above and beyond, and an extra time that they've shared with our community to help out in this crisis.
Mm-hmm. Especially all the moves. They've done that all on their own time. I know that.
You know, we, since this happened, it's really, it's involved. I mean, we've had these talks, and, and a number of things have changed, and I think this, it's just gonna continue to evolve. After these people have spent the winter there in a hotel room, they're going to be more aggressive about looking for other places, and so I don't think it's going to be a long-term situation for many of them. I think they're going to do whatever they can to find other housing, and then that's when we kinda have to make some decisions as to who wants to partner with us to, uh, see if it's going to be really a transitional housing situation, or do we wanna move? But I think it'll take on sort of a life zone over the winter. I, I don't think, however many units we have built, um, I don't think those people, I can't imagine, there are many of them that are thinking, well, this is where I'm gonna be for the next ten years. I think they're gonna, they, they, I mean, they've been used to living at River View Terrace, which is nicer than what we are providing now. I can't believe that you know, they're, they're gonna wanna stay. It's trying to evolve.
The problem comes in, is that, that those who are, I mean, kind of by definition, those who are still there, because they were all offered the opportunity for similar units to River View Terrace, same one, or in some cases, a cheaper price. Um, so the reason, and not, not even small fraction of those available. Reason for that is that these folks, they're, they're, maybe the immediate area, at least, um, the city profit. And, and there just aren't units that are affordable to them, for the most part, and, and it's certainly few, but not not to accommodate some of the, that situation. That becomes the conundrum. At what point do you reconcile yourself to the fact that, well, maybe it's elsewhere?
And that's, and then, and that's the big, really the big elephant room is that nobody's gonna wave a magic wand and put a two-hundred-unit property in the city in the next year. It's not gonna happen. Or two, or three, who knows? You know, so, these folks can afford six hundred bucks a month in rent. If you know the market, good luck. Simple as that. It's not gonna happen. I mean, unless you're real lucky in some of our troubled neighborhoods, and, and, and those conditions are terrible, I, I'm gonna guess. So, that's the bigger problem, is, is that there's not enough housing, affordable housing in the community, and, and like Greg said, it's like, you know, and will they be more, have to be more aggressive to look? Yes, but what's out there, it's, it's, it's competitive. I feel like we're having the same conversation every meeting. It's like, it's, it's so competitive out there, especially the lower rented units that are maybe not as nice, but nice in the ones that you can get. It's, man.
But we have to see who wants to partner with us on this. So, so Housing Health and, and, and some of the other agencies, do they wanna be part of this or not? I mean, they, you know, a year ago or so, uh, when we started the process against Adrian Inn, they were up in arms. They wanted us, you know, didn't want us to do anything. And so now we'll see how serious that they really are. You know, I was, excuse me. I was at the meeting at the Adrian Inn, the, the resident meeting they had, and, you know, Greg explained the rules, and talked about it, emphasized the need to find permanent house, yeah, not plan on staying here forever, staying there forever. Um, and Lynn Fennett, and a couple other people came there, Rudy Flores was there. They were all taking applications for anybody who wanted to get, you know, look at one of those spaces, because Lynn had a whole list of available, you know, available apartments or homes, not just here in Adrian. Obviously, some of them were Jackson and Addison and Hudson or whatever. The thing that concerned me was when the meeting was over and the application tables were set up, I don't know, maybe fifty people there that day. Um, only a small number of them went to fill out the applications, and everybody else went back to their room. And so it's one of those things, and Commissioner Roberts is, I, I share some of those same concerns, that people just didn't seem to be willing to even consider an action.
So Lynn, Lynn is on, but I, I will, I, I, we have a continuum of care meeting, a monthly meeting of people that work in housing. So those people, they have been signing those people up steadily, um, since, uh, crisis happened. So they have been going to the hotels weekly to sign, um, to do that paperwork with them, so many of them may have already, already have that paperwork done. Then, when we talk about housing and the list of homes that were there, and we have to consider any aid that someone gets within Section A, things like that, they may not be the, those homes that were listed may not take that, um, and when you get that, you can't double up, or you'll lose that, so combining, um, you know, your social security may make your rent triple just because you moved that aid, so some of that has to be considered in this, and it's confusing, very confusing, trust me.
Obviously.
More acronyms than the US military is in the housing industry. I always say that, I'm crazy, but, um, they, they, I know that I, I'm fairly positive that everybody has been signed up to help.
Good, it's good to hear.
Anything else?
Well, with help from those entities like Housing Health, I have a tenant that, that's involved Housing Health also, and it's the great program, but it's only a year or two program, so it's like, you know, or, or in my tenant's case, it's, it was six months. And now she's on the last month, which is this month, and now it's at least up in December, she got a couple of one-coms, and she's gotta come up with the rent for that. So it's like, so what, what are these folks supposed to do when everyone's out? It's it's a lot crazy stuff out there.
Do you have a sense of people that are staying in Adrian have ties here that are working to help them to find places? Maybe that's not why they're applying or? Uh, I, I wouldn't say that. I wouldn't, they have ties here. That's why they wanna stay. You don't think those families are actively helping? I, I have not seen. Yeah, with, on day one, like, there were a hundred and seventy-five roughly folks staying in River View Terrace, and on day one, about a hundred of them went somewhere else besides hotels. Some more came after that, uh, who had brief stays with family. Both was sustainable. Yeah, so I, I think those who were in that situation, you know, were, went there right away. I've seen a few filter back in that, that couldn't sustain that, but mostly were dealing with the same group of people who needed that hotel stays in the first place, right? Okay, well, if there's nothing else on that, I just wanna leave time here for street closure policy discussion. We'll move on to that. Pass down just sort of a summary. Uh, staff have three or four meetings on this, uh, involved. We're both chiefs, and, uh, Matt, and Jay Marks. He's over there.
Me too.
Hi, me and both, and Michelle and I. Hope I'm not missing anybody. Uh, just to, you know, you, you've heard me say in the past that I'm kind of appalled by how we handle street closures, like, to this point, seventy-five dollars is not anywhere uh, close to the actual cost of closing a street, nor have we been, just, uh, traditionally closing streets in a manner that I think is safe. Putting up one, we, we all the time have people driving around the one barricade that we put up there. Now, that's a cheap way to do it, and it allows the event organizer to just pull barricades out themselves and pull them back when they're done, but it leaves a safety issue. It leaves people driving around those barricades. I've, I've been uncomfortable with it, so we wanted to talk about two things, and we didn't just talk about street closures, but that's the Two things, and we didn't just talk about street closures, but that's the biggest part of those, we also talked about. Parades and parking lot closures as well. Trying to get tho- those practices and fees in line with. You know, a better standard and appropriate recognition of our actual costs in doing. And the street closure issue, downtown street closure issue. So we talked a lot about that, I'll start with that. It's kind of in the middle of the. The uh page here and folks who were involved in that, if I'm then chief, you know, please jump in if I'm gonna state anything that's gonna go along here. So the challenge, as I said, is, is trying to maintain the closure downtown in a way that is safe. So what we've talked about is a. We, 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 we looked at things like, well, various kinds of barricades that we've acquired have set up. And they were very, very expensive. They would, they had precipitously the cost of doing a street closure if we were to go that route, and also they're relatively deftful. In most cases, set up, they're either very, very expensive to acquire or very, very definitely set up. You get barricades that can be filled with water, for example, so a car can't drive through them. And then, you know, part of this, you know, we're in the age where people purposely drive through, you know, busy street, busy pedestrian areas. So the kindness of that, I can tell, for closing uh streets where there's not gonna be a lot of people. So those are very, you know, relatively cheap, but very difficult to put up and impossible to move on a short-term basis, so. On short, oh, it's rather, so part of what we're thinking about also is. So uh, on the one hand, we want it to be hard to move. But Eric doesn't want that, Eric wants them to be easy to move, so he can get in. And, and we've had this happen a couple of times, the first Fridays now, when ambulance had to come in for somebody. And really couldn't get in, uh to bring people out on a gator. So we were, we were thinking about both those issues as we tried to come up with a methodology. For doing it, and we started with the methodology, what are we gonna need to do? And then arrived at a price for that based on what we were going to do. And so what, what we came up with was sort of. If, if you're going to ask to close downtown, we're gonna close all four blocks downtown. How it's gonna happen? And there will be two that will be relatively easy to add two entries in that will be relatively easy to access. And those were the two that we're gonna put, please correct that, correct? So um in certain events recently, uh PD has had reserve officers there. Our reserve officers don't cost anything in and of themselves, they're volunteers, but they have to be supervised by a full-time officer. And so there's a cost for that person to be able to do that. Uh, we, we thought two of the streets, we could put police vehicles there and they, that would then be flexible and give Eric a route again if. Uh, ambulants or fire had to access those streets, uh because they would be there. The other two streets, we're gonna use BPW trucks, was that what we decided? Uh, and those will be parked, will be parked in such a way that won't be able to get about them. But that's the more permanent closure. So by using city vehicles as opposed to buying barricades, we'd save. It's an all that effort involved in trying to set them up, really just have to have these. Uh, somebody round to drive those vehicles or set up its closure. And we talked about, you know, what it's gonna take then to prepare for the event and to clean up after the event. We, we decided that for each of these sorts of closures, we're gonna acquire a deposit of two hundred and fifty dollars. That'll be refundable if everything's done properly, uh if everything's cleaned up. We started a while back, uh, uh when we had sort of a lot paving. Oh, oh, might be too strong a word, but we had some issues with cars being towed from one lot to another. Uh, without notice, uh when we were steel coating uh. Parking lots uh earlier this year. And so at that time, we came up with policies that any time we're going to close an area, it's gotta be posted twenty-four hours ahead. We put it on the event organizer to do that. Put their signs up, and if they don't put their signs up in time, then we don't tow any vehicles uh out of that area. So that's one of the things that the deposit we cover is putting up with the signs, uh but also cleaning up the streets. We do a trash sweep ourselves before the event, so possible that. Just various things like that. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, the people who need to be there to effectuate the closure in a proper way. All of that together, partners gave us a price for each of their groups that would be in there. And that came up to six hundred and fifty dollars. Except for the deposit that we're gonna charge as a fee, we're posing charges fee for downtown street. We're asking also that. Please, so the other issue with, with these has been that there hasn't been any criteria for uh who can close a downtown street. I can come in, follow, pay my seventy-five dollars to close downtown. Can't be that arbitrary, which is, right, we have to have. A methodology for deciding whether an event should be. One that can close a downtown street. So to facilitate that, we're asking that all downtown street closures be reviewed by the DDA. And Jay, did we decide also that we wanna recommend that only certain types of activities will qualify for a downtown? Street closure?
Right, so it has to be open to the public in order for it to be closed, so no private events closing streets. Um, it'd have to be, and, and we'll work through these with the DDA board, that a certain size of event, the history of the event being there. Or, or being in action previously, so like a first-year event with an unknown population, we probably don't want to be closing the street. We wanna see like a thousand people downtown when we start closing street. From a business perspective, right, we wanna make sure that we're being fair to our downtown businesses, and that we're bringing the appropriate crowds. And we hate to see five hundred people or two hundred fifty people closing all four streets. So, it'll work in conjunction with the DDA boards that have them.
And so, just so I'm clear, are we talking right now just about closing all four blocks? What if someone? Pick on the crosswell, crosswell has the great big night out front and you're closing one block, does this power please?
So this policy would be good, but we're not gonna do that. We're only gonna close downtown streets, all four blocks. We're only gonna close them for events that fall into the category that Jay just described, events that are open to public. What we want other events like Great Midnight to do is Joe do the pavilion, that's what we intend for events like that. Uh, by. This policy, we hope to prevent those other sorts of events uh over there. So the, the kinds of events that are closing downtown streets are pretty significant for, for everybody.
I have a question, Greg, and you said that um before the event, the city goes through and uh does a sweep and cleans up the trash cans and stuff. So does that group then have to go back through afterwards as part of the cleanup and empty the trash cans as well?
Also, what we're asking is that, you know, as part of the positive, those they, that they, that organizer handled the trash. And so the more those gated events like Arles just, uh, they do do that. But all, but all those stuff that goes to handle some of the trash and like clean up after themselves, so. When the event organizer does that, then, you know, the deposit will be returned, but not probably. So we're now at seventy-five dollars to close the streets?
And just to be clear, so that six hundred and fifty dollars covers. The man whose cars on the two O streets, all of that, other than the deposit, okay?
Right. So there's also if the event wants to have. City come into a street to, to sweep during the event to pick up trash. For what time, they'll, they can do that for two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's what's been on the, on the sheet as well, so they can come in and pick up trash for them during the event one time.
That's the idea for downtowns, big closures, you know, for parking lot closures, which are very. This is not really the pavilion, we have a rental rate for the pavilion right now with four hundred dollars, that, that's. Kind of the assertive, that's right, we charge a real price for a realistic price of closing the pavilion. And, and so by charging the realistic price there, currently we're kind of driving people forward closing streets instead because it's much cheaper. So I don't think we're proposing to change the pavilion uh fee right now. But separate from that would be other small parking lot closures these have on. Public lots, you can see those only require thirty-day notice. We would only allow downtown businesses to ask to close downtown parking lots. The, this possibility of a fee waiver, again, is determined by the DDA, if the DDA determines that it's a community event. And the fee for those would be a hundred. Um, residential streets. Those don't have the same risk when you can kind of do those. Think the old-fashioned way, if you will, with the, just the normal barricades. You know, thirty days notice. We're asking that somebody who wants to close a residential street, by. Edition signed by fifty percent of the people on that street. Do that, so one block, fifty percent of those people on that block, it's two blocks. Other people on the two blocks. Part of the application, close that. A reasonable number of, amount of bite on. Happen, and again, a little money pushing out due to that. Just recognizing staff time, process like that. And then finally. Parades. Here in Jordan, that's a sorry. So we thought a lot about this as well, and we came up with was that we would have. Free basic routes that are out of the parades that we are familiar with, air parade. Fourth of July, almost the homecoming parade, right? And uh, so if you choose one of those, there's, there's a set fee for that, two hundred dollars. Maybe you can just describe how you actually handle those right now, but.
What our current process is?
Well, process now and has, has been.
Okay, so our, our current process, uh, our, our form is about a half a page, so it does, it's woefully inadequate in terms of information gathering. Um, generally, we get those filled out and sent to us. Few days in advance, week, two weeks in advance if we're lucky, so it's very difficult for us to have the staff in and ready to go to set those up. It's a bit of a challenge. Um, we don't have any fees right now, so we do about twenty parades a year. We take those forms in, we take a look at the route, which sometimes people are, are designing their own routes, they, they have an idea of. Places they want to touch on this route, but it winds up closing more streets than we're able to do, so. So if you're, if you're cutting the city in half, so nobody can go north, south, that's one thing, but if you wanna do a spiral and you're, and you're. Doing north, south, and east, west, it becomes a real problem, so we thought. Um, a lot of the people, they're not even really sure what routes they want to have when they come in, so they say, well, what do they do for this, or what do they do for that? So by having three to choose from, uh, right off the bat, then we already know the traffic pattern we can set up for, it's that much easier for us, so. Uh, we're also asking for more time in advance in terms of filing those things so that we can have the information. And we can actually have the, uh, you know, event organizer's name, cell phone, and, and all the information that we need, should something come up that we can plan for these things.
So you can still choose your own route, uh, as a vision, but if you choose your own route. There's the problem for this department or intersections, right? And so if you wanna choose your own route, it's twenty-five dollars for each additional intersection that they have to deal with. Uh, beyond those that are on this route. That's his department. Please. So two hundred dollars though is the standard fee, that's a thirty days notice for that. Other general notes, uh, we're proposing that public entities and veterans who are not paid the fees of who will use. Those for two, that's what groups. I think that's what I wanted to discuss. You know, if you were in agreement with this, what we would need to do is, I think, frame a policy and a. Then we're fee schedule to future meetings, so that.
But the six, in fact, the downtown street, street code, so six fifty is essentially what you and staff came up with as a, just the flat. We're not making any money on it, that's the cost, provide the service to close the streets, um, cause again, seventy-five dollars is very arbitrary, so. Cause I had, I've had people come complaining to me about closing the streets for lesser events. Arles is the big one where it's like they bring so many people in, but there's been a lot of other closures that have not, so like, you know, so I get. I, 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 I like the idea because we hear on both sides, so like, you know, the big event like last weekend, and then we also hear about the little events, the littler events that don't bring in. As much traffic and you close the streets down, that impacts the businesses, so. Yeah. I'm comfortable with it.
Hi, Eric, um, I guess on that. So I certainly support the idea of only closing the street when the event is open to the public. But one concern I have about that is we're looking at upcoming Frank Adams E-Race stigma, which is gonna start at Four Corners. And they do charge, I mean, they, they sell entry fees for that, uh, they all have seven or eight hundred people coming into the city for that. But. If they can't do it downtown, because we don't wanna close the streets for something that charges a fee, where do it, where do we put them? I mean, that's.
Well, I mean, I think we're doing that first year of.
I mean, they gotta, they, they go down Toledo across Broad, a church.
Well, it's sort, it's sort of in the nature of parade as it, as it.
Okay.
Historically operated, I, since here we're doing something special with it as I understand it and, and clothe it and starting at the Four Corners, but historically, I think. And in future years, we will.
But you do, you do, like, I don't wanna say close intersection, you have officers there to make sure that nobody runs that.
Yeah, we, we do a parade permit that you know that right now, yeah.
It's surely something we need. But when it's just taking care of the cost, I'm hoping that we can see this implemented and revisit. As costs go up and prices go up, we need to revisit. Make sure that we stay with. The cost, we're breaking even now with the estimates we're making. Need to revisit, but I'm, I'm all for it, I think it's needed.
Well, like Greg said, it's like we're, it's, it's easy to close the street, it's cheaper, close the street than it is the farmer's market. That's. I had a bad, I'm closing, close street. Ten bucks.
You mentioned. The fair and July Fourth and Homecoming and three designated routes. So those are fine, I'm just talking through. So when you say public entities and veterans don't pay, so the fair, which. They would not pay.
They would.
They would pay, okay, they're not a public, that's what I thought. Because they're. Non-public, is that what you're saying? No, because. I was trying to come up with who, who then would, who wouldn't, so like. I'm not real sure who runs the July Fourth parade, I thought it was kind of like the. Civitan, there we go, I knew it was something like that. So they would. Even though it's a Fourth of July parade, because it's a civitan, they're not a public entity or a veteran. So they would pay for the uh parade route, correct? Those. They're right now, I I am, again, I'm I'm not. We definitely need to do something, um I just have some questions right now, saying yes or no or. Like if you don't like, just trying to envision. Who's going to come and email me tonight and go, what about this, what about that? Just trying to think of all the times that. Streets are closed. I love the idea of pushing people to the pavilion, especially once we get bathrooms and better um lighting and. Electricity over there, but really, I think that's a great idea. To, I shouldn't say push, encourage.
So.
At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Uh we will begin inside. The. City chambers first, and then we will open it up to Zoom after we are finished inside the chambers. So just to reiterate, there's a three minute time limit, you will hear the alarm if you do. Exceed that three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Uh Ashley, the boss of Frank, one point one and a half, South Frank Street. Um I was just here on behalf of the Lenaway five. Two, um so we're going to be here, they know. Um they just wanted me to follow up, they sent out packet out because I know there were some. Let's see, there we go, there's some. Um like discrepancies, but things that we didn't really understand rules. With special events and things like that, before the event, questions that didn't get answered, and then they caused trouble during the event because of questions. So they had put together a packet of all the communication that they had with. Different people from the city trying to get the information going all the way back to. The first one on June ninth. Is when we first started trying to give the information about. Food trucks and different things like that, and we didn't get answers. So. Um so they put this together, they said that they sent it to every single one of you. And haven't heard anything that's here to follow up, I have paper copy, so. Mayor, you guys can feel free to make paper copies, but that's in your email. And I was just following up to let you guys know that that should be in your email somewhere, if you need it sent again, I have a copy. And then Mary is unknown.
All right, uh I guess I have comments too, so. Uh, what are your terms anyway, you guys? Oh, yes, you've never met me before, I apologize, I'm a kid, I'm a, it's great to meet you off the first time. So I'm four point two South Winters, in case you uh don't know that, I. I assure you, I'm a local. So, I'm very tired, I'm glad that you guys have been working on that, I look forward to seeing some of the repairs done. I uh. Definitely hope that you guys will keep in mind that some of these residents are going to be. They're disabled or elderly and they don't have a whole lot of other options, as. Some of you'll point out, it's very hard to get something out. As well as uh. We have very limited resources for transition, and otherwise it would be a great help, and I know. It may seem a bit intimidating, but I assure you it will be a great public good. As long as you do what you're supposed to with it and keep trying to do this thing. And it's going to help a lot of people, I personally, the human benefit of it is, and more important part. But then also with the street closures. I understand why you would want to uh make downtown harder, close the uh the farmer's market. I do question why there isn't the possibility of just one street, why it has to be all for by the law. And that seems a little silly, especially since I'm to a lot of these events, I see a lot of you when I go to these events, and sometimes I don't see when I go to them. But. Very regularly, it is just one street closed down there. And. I also question uh. Why the residential road would go up in price? And. If this is really the best option, because. Part is, yes, you're trying to make these on your call, but also. As a city, you're trying to allow your citizens to enjoy things or things on. So where do you balance that is a good question, but I do have some concerns with some of these. Proposed changes, I mean, a couple of you will be hearing from me about it. I'm sure you're shocked. Uh more for in the regular meeting, that's all for now.
I have a comment. Here on my one forty eight North Sky Street. And um civitan is a nonprofit organization. And we put on the Fourth of July parade, we've done it for many years. And we do it as a community service project. It's nothing that ever gains us anything, it's just. Work on our. So. We have to pay the two hundred dollars.
Hello, Joshua Frank, one forty one and a half, top meeting room. And I'd like to point out the purpose of a municipality is provide services. Not a business, it should have been run such. And asking such. High fees, asking that group about nine hundred dollars to go downtown. That policy really started being exclusionary, like small groups like the S double A or pride, nothing ahead of nine hundred dollars. Other goes downtown, so it seems to me that. Policy reasons that you only want certain events. Like Heart of Lish, like First Pride, then that's it. End of story. Like, I don't think that's very fair policy to other groups, other organizations. Don't have that.
That's what I thought, find one thing, I'm Don Taylor, of course, I'm by metal breaker, I'm not quite sure I understood you. I have to pay that fee for our wishes. I have to raise the money privately. Pay for that event. It's a lot of money for me to have to raise, and I have, I want to address it right now. When we closed our streets last weekend, all the barricades have been there all summer long, okay, we put them out. We managed that process. We put them back, we cleaned up the streets, so. You know, there wasn't anybody there from the city helping us, except when they volunteers do certain things, and I'll talk about that later.
I will now open it up to Zoom, if anyone would like to make public comment, for the record, please state your name and address.
Ken Hillcar, one ten South Lowcase. Madam Mayor, the city of Adrian resembles countries such as China when it comes to limiting free speech. To date and during your time as mayor, the city has established time limits on public comments. Adopted consent agenda to circumvent public comments, and now he has to mission him as chastising the public for their comments. Last week, one of the commissioners shared their frustration with me and my attempts to create greater public awareness about the city's pension deficit. Please keep in mind that I have additionally attempted to create awareness about entering into performance contracts for energy. Code enforcement, blight, no bid contracts, special assessment districts, and the lack of East Adrian Village representation on the commission. The commissioner's statements were in error as the commissioner used the term or instead of and, and the comments were somewhat misleading. When the commissioner emphasized and highlighted efforts specific to the opening of contracts as the holy grail to reduce pension deficits. I am in agreement that employees are part of the solution, my concern is that the comments were crafted to place a much larger emphasis. On the role of employee groups when the emphasis should have been estimated at ninety percent of the role of commissioners, past, present and future. The city receives annual MERS report, and I called the actuary from the firm who created the report. About an hour later, I received the call from Kerry Vandenbush, who is the C E O of MERS. And according to that Ms. Vandenbush, the actuary charges three hundred plus dollars per hour, so she answered my questions. I was told that the city has to increase their monthly payments, which is highlighted in the MERS report. Convert to defined benefits and, not or, and make large, very large pit lump sum payments. The city, like most cities, consider their lump sum payments to be large, but in the eyes of MERS, they are very small and have very little impact on the pension deficit. Seven years ago, the deficit was at fourteen point five million, today it is at twenty six point seven million. While some people would have you rely on a six year old message, projected out another ten to fifteen years. I choose to create awareness and will not apologize for shaking the ivory tower. The city has made a couple of lump sum five hundred thousand dollar. Payments in the past, but in reality, this does not even cover the six hundred dollar cost to annually service the account. On top of this, there's a pool of smaller employees paying into the. Fund and basic math would support an annual lump sum payment of one to three million dollars on top of defined.
Your time is up, thank you.
Monthly payments.
You may, may, do public comment at the regular meeting, your time is up, thank you. Hearing no more public comment, may I give a motion to adjourn?
Move support.
All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and we will begin at seven ten. I now call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September nineteenth, nineteenth, two thousand and twenty two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
Present.
Commissioner Hope.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry.
Present.
Mr. Gows.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, we are going to do something that is not listed on your agenda, we are going to do a proclamation. There is a large gathering here for this person, and I will not take credit for this wonderful idea of a proclamation, it was. Artalicious committee members that thought this would be a great idea, and I agreed. And so that is why there is a large presence here tonight for Don Taylor, so he is a man that doesn't like to. Get a lot of kudos and a and a lot of attention, but he deserves it for everything he has done, so if Don Taylor could please come up. To the front and I will join you and I'm going to read this proclamation and if any.
The chief just said my house is on fire.
And if the Artalicious Committee that is present would like to come up to be over here as well, that would be great, thank you. All right, Drake, I'm not, no, I'm just kidding. So we have a proclamation here for Don Taylor. Whereas Artalicious's focus is to expose, excite and educate. Encouraging appreciation and participation in a variety of art forms and cultural activities. The fair enhances community vitality by providing diverse artistic experiences in a historic downtown setting. While offering a unique opportunity for regional artists to showcase their talents. And whereas, as the premier small town fine arts fair in the region. Artalicious provides interactive opportunities for artists, businesses and visitors. Offering a vibrant and inspiring mix of amazing art, fabulous food, delightful music and enticing aromas. Artalicious satisfies all the senses. And whereas this year, the Artalicious Fine Arts Fair returned for its fifteenth year. Attracting thousands of people to our city during the two day event. And whereas Artalicious is the product of months of hard work by the dedicated volunteers of the Artalicious Committee. And whereas Don Taylor has been involved with Artalicious for many years, over a decade of them as the committee chair. Don has worn many hats in the process, including organizing, fundraising, recruiting volunteers, grant writing and so much more. Including trash pickup, which I have witnessed personally many times. That is not in the proclamation, but those are my words. Now therefore I, Angela Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan. Do hereby celebrate fifteen years of Artalicious and thank Don Taylor and the Artalicious Committee. For their continued efforts to bring this wonderful event to our community. Yes, and I know that Don really wanted to address and talk about Artalicious, so this also gives him a wonderful time. To give his very long speech that he would like to give about Artalicious if he is so enticed. You can go get your notes if you want. But yes, we will let you, because uh but I do want to say for anybody that. Came down, wow, every artist told me that it's the best numbers they've ever had when they have come to Artalicious, they were so excited by it. And it was just a fabulous event and what was great. Which 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 was a greater accomplishment to me, Don. Is that I kept seeing artist Adrian, Michigan, artist Adrian, Michigan, artist Adrian, Michigan. That was the biggest accomplishment to me because so many of our artists came from Adrian or even Lenaway County. It shows you um what is happening here and that Artalicious is a great event for them to come and showcase their talents, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. I just want to start by. Reminding everybody that this would never have happened if it hadn't been for Pi Benio. She and four other people had the vision to start this, and she's been there. Every minute, every second, every day for. Well, really sixteen years, we took a year off, but uh. I I don't really deserve that, these people deserve that, I don't, but but I'll take it home and put it somewhere. Just, you know. Michelle. Why am I going to get Michelle Dewey? Kind of, the commissioners want just a a brief overview tonight, okay, I'll come down, so. So it was our fifteenth annual event, right, we had two great days of weather. I think Jay, Marcy, Mark, Jay had something to do with that, he told me he was really a meteorologist when he was younger, so. But you know, we've had, we don't always have a great history of that, we had wonderful artists, if you got downtown. A broad variety of people, they all did very, very well. And Commissioner Collins, you're here somewhere from the. He got on my case because his wife spent too much money downtown. That's what you're supposed to do, you're supposed to buy art, so. Great nonprofit organizations, um My Adventure Theater for Kids. The symphony had over three hundred. Kids play instruments on Saturday and well over a hundred on Sunday. So I mean, you, every child usually brings a couple of parents, you know, there's a thousand fifteen hundred people right there. Great food, we had five food vendors and I tasted them all, and they're all coming back next year because they really love our event. Um a lot of good on-street entertainment, some special events this year, the plain wave microscope, yeah. The reverse the microscope, the telescope, I'm sorry, was down by the library, uh man, that's a, it's always a lot of fun. Uh the library, uh thanks to Jen, our library director has so many activities inside and outside at their tent. First year ever. Lenaway County K twelve student art show right in here, we had over a hundred and twenty five. Pieces of student work digitally on the screens here from all, I think. Maybe maybe not all eleven districts, but they were all invited, uh we are going to try to get that on the street next year, so. Somebody said, why don't you show all the art, well, if we'd had Winter Street. From uh, it would have taken us a long time to to show all the artwork, but anyway. Annie Howard with Adrian Public Schools organized that, what a great uh. Great committee member she is. Uh the Michigan Ohio Woodturners, if you saw them, they've been here for a few years, they demonstrate for two full days, they let kids make pens. They did not like our idea for the auction this year, so I said, what do you think we should do, and they said, we'll just donate everything. For your auction. for your auction. And if you had a chance to go to the library and look at the stuff they had up there, I mean, it's pretty incredible stuff. And we actually bought something that really is close to our family, so we're very excited about that. Lots of, we had four green spaces, local landscaping companies or organizations like that donate materials for us to create displays downtown. We have entertainment in those areas. I don't want to pick out one, but Smith Nurseries Display on East Mahoney, you'd love to have it in your backyard. They do such a great job. Historic Downtown Building Tour, we do one year a building tour, the next year we do historic homes. This year, we had a bit of a problem with the Historic Downtown Building Tour. There were so many people that John Kushel and Laura Berdick had to split them in half and do two separate tours. You know, I'm not sure which directions they each went, but had about seventy-five people take the tour, which I'm sure a largest one ever. And then the final thing downtown was the ACA had their ties that bind exhibit, if you've ever seen that. Black masks, all the ACA members decorated them, how the COVID-19 impacted them, and it was on display at the gallery of shots. So a lot of cool stuff, a lot of fun. I want to say some thank yous now to the committee. You are really special people. You step up when you need to step up, and I don't know how to thank you enough. My wife, I talked her into joining the committee a few years ago and she keeps taking on more, so. Yeah, I guess after for almost fifty-five years, I can understand that. Thank you, honey. Appreciate it. City of Adrian. Administration in general, thank you. Commissioners, mayor, thank you. Mayor and I sometimes disagree on things, but we're neighbors, we love each other. I want to shout out the APD. We had a little incident on Saturday that troubled some of our exhibitors that were females. I got on the phone to nine-one-one and I want to tell you something. I followed the individual responsible from a distance. They walked me through the whole process and while they were doing that, I'm reporting where I'm at and they're talking to the police. We got to a certain point, I crossed the street. The police arrived, handled it, said there really isn't anything we can do, but to know that they respond the way they did was really good. And I was able to report that to the people and, and you know, they can't do anything right now, but at least hopefully we'll have people like that stay away. Jay Marks came down and helped us put the information booth together. Not an easy job. So did Jeremy Kleeman. Thanks to Jason Lawrence and his crew that take our information booth. They store it for us over, over the winter. They bring it in on Friday. We got a volunteers to put it together. We then we take it apart. They took it away this morning. Just, they're just great guys. DPW, man, I tell you what, hats off to them right now with what they're doing out at the end, but special thanks to my friend Matt and all the guys, but Eric Kelly is always there when you need him. Always doing the little things to help out. And of course, my friend Robin Connor, who helps the food vendors get all their license and everything. And Eric Massengill, who inspects all the trucks. Sometimes they drive out to the home where people live to inspect them. I mean, it's great service. We really appreciate it. And you need to know how much it means to us that you support us the way you do. And some of you are donors as well. We also had volunteers from Meyer, Plain Wave, and Creek Enterprises, and they were absolutely great. We struggle with volunteers and we talk about this all the time, right? But Chris Miller, who's on our committee, he did a lot of work to arrange for some of these people. Now, finally, Adrian Public Schools. Annie Howard is on our committee. And he said, so I'll see if I can get some volunteers for you. So Annie put out the call, there are art students and others, and Annie starts sending me the list of students and when they can come, you know, and I'm trying to figure out when can we use them? And then somebody said, oh, we heard Nate Parker wants to see how he can help, our new superintendent, right? So Nate ends up getting another eight or ten students. I think Michelle had a lot to do with Nate. I'm not quite sure, but. Or Jay, oh, Jay, I'm sorry, Jay did because he's, but anyway, they really stepped up. And then, so we're trying to replace ourselves. Some of us are. Some of you younger ones have to stay on. Pi and I would like to replace ourselves sooner rather than later. And we've had some people step up without naming any names from Adrian Public Schools, who are very, very, very involved in the fine arts. If you know what's happening there lately, you might know who they are. Also had a nice chat with Joey Ryder at the Crosswell, and she has so much she really wants to get involved in our committee. So maybe we've turned the corner on volunteerism and getting our companies involved and our schools involved. And I've spoken too long. I just, you know, this was unnecessary, but thank you so much. I really appreciate it. All the credit goes to all these people. And I might add, tonight I have one, two of my children, three of my grandchildren, four of my grandchildren. That's right, Jack. I forgot you were back there. How could I miss you, buddy? Anyway, thank you all for being here. You're the love of my life, along with Grandma Sharon and the other kids. So thank you all. I didn't mean to take this much time, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Moving on in the agenda, we will now go to the consent agenda. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Movie adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts. Yes. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted by unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under special orders, special order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the proposed vacation of a portion of Railroad Avenue. At this time, I now call the public hearing open. If you have any comments regarding the vacation of a portion of Railroad Avenue, please come to the podium or speak online as well. Hearing no comments. I now call the public hearing closed. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero zero five is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter sixty-six of the Adrian City Code. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt the ordinance. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Robert.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Moving on to resolutions, resolution R twenty-two dash zero sixty-four is from engineering. It is a resolution to vacate a portion of Railroad Avenue. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Movie adopt the resolution?
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero sixty-five is from Fire. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and approve a pro-care service agreement with Stryker and authorize the fire chief to enter into a letter of authorization with Stryker. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Before I open it up for public comment, I would ask Chief Massengill, can you explain why we are waiving the bid process so the public is aware?
Yes, the bid process is being waived just because they're the only, they're the manufacturer of the equipment, of the medical equipment, and they're the only ones that can service the equipment.
Thank you. At this time, we will now open it up if there, if there is any public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero sixty-six is from Administration. It is a resolution to waive the requirement for sealed bids and accept a quote from Brown and Sons Roofing and Siding Company for a repair project at the Adrian Inn. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Before we open it up for public comment, I'm going to ask city administrator Greg Elliott to explain why we are waiving the requirement for sealed bids.
Thank you, Mayor. So given the timing issues here, we want to get this done before cold weather sets in for the reasons discussed at our last two pre-meetings. We went with seeking quotes as opposed to going through the whole formal sealed bid process. We did have four different contractors look at the job. Only two were willing to quote repairs and we're choosing the lowest of those two.
We will now open it up for public comment in reference to this resolution.
Ten Toll Cars, one ten South Locust. When you purchased this hotel, I guess, and I'm hoping maybe some, one of the commissioners could stand up and be transparent about it, did you actually consider that you would have to waive the bid process? A broken water main is an emergency. It's unknown, but when you purchased that hotel, surely I would hope that someone took into consideration that you would have to have emergency repairs on the building and possibly waive the bid process. Did the commissioners even consider that employees only work four days a week? How are we going to run an operation that runs seven days? I just question the transparency of this. Now, a lot of times we go back to history and history helps us prepare for the future. And if the, the resolution does not say that the City of Adrian failed to take this into consideration when they purchased the hotel, I think you're not doing any favors to the city because down the road, my children may want to read through the historical resolutions so they don't make the same mistakes. Please, someone, be transparent. Tell us even if you considered this when you bought the hotel.
Wookiee Ramos four twenty-two, South Winter Street. I know you haven't heard from me recently or anything, but I'm just glad that you're putting a roof on that, that you're going to be putting a roof on this. I'm going to be doing so in a quick manner so that they connect a little bit more comfort over the winter in such a small area. So I'm glad that you're all doing that and working towards getting that done quickly. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-two dash zero six seven is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with Visit Lenaway for administration of the All Trails app and authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I have used the All Trails app in recent years, last couple of years, and it's a wonderful app for those of you that are interested in walking, biking, running. And so I'm thrilled that we are getting on the board with this. This is wonderful news.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Commissioners, you have miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? Hearing none. I will move on to public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first. You will see your time on the screen for your three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Carolyn Marr, one forty-eight North Scott Street. I know that the commission and the mayor struggled with the trash can decision. I want to tell you that I think it was the best decision you've made in a long time. When I walk down the street now, I don't see trash everywhere. People do not seem to throw out their trash on Saturday. And on top of that, instead of just throwing their trash out by the street, which is what they were doing, no bags, no nothing. Now it's all in the cans. It looks so much better. And when I walk down the street to collect trash, it's always just the pop things that people throw out of their windows, I think. So thank you very much.
Hello, Wookiee Ramos four twenty-two, South Winter Street. I feel like I've said this once already. Anyways, so first I want to address that I'm really glad that you guys are putting work on to Adrian Inn. I hope you're going to put more work on to it and keep it transitional housing over the long term. People need the support, need the help. And we know that as a community, we've known that for a very long time. There's just not sufficient resources here. So I'm glad that you guys are going to start helping to solve that, and I hope you two can remain dedicated to that. And then a bit separate from that, I do want to say I was down Art Delicious. It was amazing. I did go there both days, but I did go down. It was amazing. I'm always happy to see it. Great job, Don Taylor and your whole committee. You provided a great event. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Kara Snyder, four two two South Winter. Don't have anything prepared, didn't intend to speak, but as a person who has been homeless repeatedly, who has struggled with the local system, who has dealt with a lot of trauma due to this, I want to give you guys a huge thank you for stepping up. Of course, nobody planned this. Everything was spur of the moment. I appreciate that you did your best to help people. I appreciate all of the agencies and organizations that have been working their butts off to try to make this work. It's not perfect, but guys, you guys didn't have a template. You had no clue going in. You did the best you could. And I thank each and every person who has bothered to help these people because this is a horrible position to be put in. So thank you, all of you who are here and every agency that is not here. Thank you.
Don Taylor, four seventy-five Meadowbrook Drive. I missed one name. And I really feel bad about this, and I'm not going to take but a few more seconds, but Michelle Dewey. I know you hate me for this, but this lady is, I, I thank you. That's all I can say is thank you for what you do. I mean, she's a member of our committee. She represents the city so amazingly well. She never says no to anything.
She never says no to anything. I just appreciate her so much, and except for last night, she wanted to drive the Gator. And I had to tell my grandson, he couldn't drive the Gator because I signed the paperwork for it and everything, you know? But since she's a city employer, she, she became part of the trash czar crowd, so she's just great. Michelle, thank you. I don't mean to single you out among everybody else, but I forgot to mention you earlier, so my apologies.
We will now open it up for Zoom participant, participants, sorry. You will see the time limit on the screen as well, and for the record, please state your name and address if you have any public comment. Hearing no public comment, I will now open it up for commissioner comments.
I have one thing.
Commissioner Strayer.
I'd like to thank Don Taylor and, and all of his volunteer staff for the work that they did at Ardelechus. I was a vendor at Ardelechus. My booth was basically at the Four Corners, so I had a good view of everything that was going on. And from my vantage point, things were just, things just seemed seamless. And every time I looked around, I almost always would see one of the volunteers doing something. So it just seemed like a well-oiled machine. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody, and even though I personally tried to make Don's life a little bit miserable Sunday morning with some of my driving skills, we did work through it. So, but all, all in all, things went really well.
Commissioner Roberts?
Just a reminder that the Greg Adams Erase the Stigma Race will take place downtown at the Four Corners at nine AM on October first. The Kids Fun Run begins at nine, and the five K walk or run begins shortly thereafter, generally about nine fifteen, nine twenty. So even if you aren't interested in walking or running, please come down and support and cheer everybody on.
Commissioner Gauss?
I want to thank the mayor for, on Saturday afternoon, in the middle of Ardelechus, she was able to read a proclamation to those in attendance to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. I think that's an important part of our local heritage. To go back and look at history, we can go all the way back to the seventies when Cesar Chavez was organizing the farm workers in California. The City of Adrian and its residents, particularly the Hispanic community, got behind that. Cesar Chavez was here in the city, and we had people celebrating with him. Next Thursday, on the twenty-second, there will be a presentation at the Historic Society Museum where they will discuss that history, and Lupe De Leon will be there and as the leader of the group. He personally marched with Cesar Chavez when he was here in the seventies. So I think Hispanic community is an important part of the city, and I'm very happy that the mayor was able to recognize the, the Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from the fifteenth of September through the fifteenth of October. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
So that leads me to my little comment here for the night. The Hispanic Heritage presentation that happened wouldn't have been able to happen at the degree that it happened without a volunteer, Rudy Flores. I know he doesn't like attention, but Rudy Flores does a lot for our community, a lot. And he is also one of them behind organizing Thursday Night. You know, I know it is during the, the candidate forum as well. So I know it's gonna kind of divide people a little bit on which, on where they're going to go, but it, volunteers, that's what we've talked about tonight, Ardelechus volunteers. Every event, first Friday, it's all volunteers. And what I want to implore to the public is that all of these things happen because of volunteers. We are elected officials. We knew what we were getting into. We get ripped apart all the time. We get people coming at us. We can't please everyone. We know that. We're trying our best, but we knew what we were getting into. That is not fair to volunteers. Volunteers, that is one reason why they've had a hard time keeping volunteers for so many of these events, because they take a beating on social media. They take a beating at the event. It, it, there's so much negativity, and it needs to not be directed at these volunteers, or we're not going to have volunteers. We're not gonna have these amazing events, because it's not fair to people that are just there volunteering. It is not fair at all. And these people are all people that are working jobs or have businesses or whatever it is they're doing, serving the community in other capacities. They're giving all this extra time to come and volunteer, and then to be belittled, to be taken down. Whether it be in person, you know, on social media, wherever it might be, it is not fair and it is not okay. And this is why we have a problem with keeping volunteers. They don't want to stick around. We can't retain them because they are taking such a beating. We're used to it. We can handle it. We knew what we signed up for, but please, I need, we need everybody to really take that into consideration before speaking those words, that every event that happens in our community, for the most part, everything is a volunteer organization, and it's a group of volunteers. It's a committee of volunteers. And please keep that in mind when you are expressing your comments. Thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner Helt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Strayer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.